The Warntonship High School Board Meeting, it's Tuesday, August 16, 2022. The first part of the open session is the Pledge of Allegiance, so if we'd all stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. First up is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda? If not, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Anderson. Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is public comment. Visitors are allowed up to three minutes to address the Board of Education. There's a brochure up there with the details. We have one person who signed up. Ms. Anderson, if you'd like to address the board, feel free to address the podium.
My name is Caroline Anderson. I live at 17623 West Julie Lane across the street. I am here representing the Property Owners Association of Country Town Subdivision. And Dr. Weisman, it's nice to meet you, welcome. Every year, we have a concern at the beginning of the year that traffic is, kids are speeding through, parents are speeding through, parents are parking side by side at the north end of the subdivision. Students and staff are exiting to the left out of that mid entrance and just concerns. We have no parking signs, students still park. Parents come, they make U-turns in our first cul-de-sac, we have young children there, and there's just a, we have done everything that we can and we're just looking for your support to help get the message out to the students, to the staff and the community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there's anybody else who'd like to address the board, feel more than welcome to right now. Next up is the board discussion on any visitor comments. Is there any discussion that we'd like to have?
It's been going on forever. I'm not doing it, but I feel terrible. I have had friends that live in that neighborhood and that's just been an ongoing.
Yeah, maybe we can touch base after sometime in the next couple of weeks and we can just talk through specifics so I can understand that better. Happy to do that. Okay, yeah, that works, that works.
Fantastic. Next up is the President's Report. I'd like to talk a little bit about our committee structure. We're looking at doing something very different than we've done in the past. Some of the feedback I've gotten or received from board members in the past is when it comes to committee assignments, they'd like to be more engaged in what's going on in the committees. They'd like to know more about what is the intent or the mission of each committee. So what we're looking at doing is changing the committees. So the purpose is to provide board members with dedicated time to discuss committee items committee. And what we would do is, right now, we have, six times throughout the year, we have two board meetings. So a month. And we would take the first board meeting of that month and have all three of those committee meetings meet, one after another. We try and keep them in about an hour each. That way, we have much more impact in the committees, there's much more involvement with the committees, and we would assign two board members to be the chairs of each of those committees. The board members would be the chair of the meetings. We'd work with the administration, and it would just give the board a much greater chance to be involved in the committees. So Dr. Weisman can give us some more details, but the way I'm looking at right now, there's a student committee. I won't go in details, I think the names speak for themselves, and I was going to look towards Kathy and Tony to be on those committees. I'm sorry, Tony, you're over there, based on your backgrounds. There's an operations committee, where I was looking at Mr. Anderson and Mr. Carlson to be part of that committee, and then a stakeholder committee, which is be more involved in the community, and that's where I'd be looking towards Tom and Natalia to be involved in that committee. So, something to think about. I'd like to get moving on this pretty quickly. Like I said, the committee chairs would run the meetings, and I think it would give us an opportunity to be much more involved in the different committee groups that are going on. Anything you'd like to add to that, or?
That's a great explanation. Probably the only things I would add is, there are a handful of committees that districts require to have, maybe the statute requires it, or our negotiation agreement requires it, and we could still have those to fill those statutes or requirements and run as a district staff committee, if the board would be comfortable with that approach. Essentially, these three committees essentially serve as, it's a committee of the whole. So you, as a whole board, are having a committee structure that allows you really, hopefully, some time to discuss topics without an immediate vote that's going to happen, or a pending vote. So probably, what I could offer is that I would touch base with the committee chairs, maybe a month beforehand. At the beginning of the committee schedule, we'd look at what types of discussions you'd like to have throughout the year, and then about a month before each meeting, we'd talk about the topics that you think would be most relevant. I assume, for example, either the student or the operations committee's probably going to want to talk about safety pretty quickly. We spent a lot of time on that today in closed session, that's why we're a little late, sorry, everybody. But as committee chairs, you would, you'd be responsible for setting the discussion items, and then asking us to prepare anything as an administrative team to get ready for that meeting. Can also answer any questions?
No, the only other thing I was going to add is, you know, if there's an agenda item that comes along that we need to act on, there's nothing to prevent us from adding to the agenda for that meeting, whether in closed or open session, if we needed to vote on something. So we're not being closed-minded that we can't vote for these during these meetings, but we want the focus to be on the committee meetings.
Just to be clear, we won't vote in executive session.
Yes, sorry about that.
That's quite all right.
Yep. That's why you're next to me, you keep me in line.
So can you just clarify, from the staff perspective, they're still having their committees the way they've always been?
Yeah.
And we're still going to those?
I would actually recommend that you don't go to those. You let the staff run those committees, and you could ask them to come back and report, or ask those staff groups to provide more information. Really, my recommendation is, you need to promote discussion as a school board, as board members amongst yourself. Also, learn, they could be learning opportunities.
So more engagement in the communities without taking up additional board member time, because it is, right now, a lot of the committees will meet during the days. We can't always make it, it's not always convenient. So that's why, we've already have the time set aside for these meetings, let's be, let's be in part of the committees during that time.
If you're running a committee on operations, you could say, I'd like to know what's going on with XYZ, which is another committee that exists, and they could come and be part of that conversation at the same time. So you could, it's not like you're not going to be able to be involved in those conversations, should they be necessary. That works for me.
I'd like clarification, I guess, on, for each of these three committees, what is the ownership, but what's the charter of each of these committees? So stakeholder committee, to me, seems pretty ambiguous.
Scope.
What's the scope of each of these committees? And to have a better understanding of, you know, what it is operations is going to cover, what it is, you know, each of these three committees cover.
Part of this outlined right now, it's like stakeholders would be in charge of strategic planning, the voice priorities, legislation priorities, messaging priorities, the boosters and foundations, gifts to the districts.
Gotcha. I did look at this, I forgot I had.
No, 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 that's okay. You know, operations will talk about finance, facilities, demographics, budgets, treasure report, budget priorities, facilities, insurance. And then student would be involved in curriculum, safety, summer school, handbooks, calendars.
Part of what, part of what I think, a committee of the whole structure with a calendar could, even if it's not this structure, but a committee structure that has a calendar, and that you're able to attend, would give you is an opportunity to give us some direction before, big picture direction before we start our work. And a lot of times, it seems like, not to anybody's fault, but a lot of school boards get put in situations where the majority of the planning happens before the board's been able to identify any priorities. So a lot of what a committee of the whole can do with a calendar is give you an opportunity to discuss as a school board, here's what we think is important. They're going to line up with what our administration thinks are important, but just making sure that we're on the same page, so that you can know that as we're doing the work, we've already listened to you.
And Steve, to your question, you know, what's the charter of some of these, part of that is going to be on the board members to develop, what is the charter, what's the mission of these committees? I mean, it's a, it's a new approach, so it's going to be work in process out of the gate.
The, part of this comes at the opportunity cost of some of the department updates that we have been getting, which I would say, I, to a certain extent, some of them seemed a little redundant, but I also liked them, because it got us a little closer to what's actually happening in the school, in the departments. So we might want to think about a way to fold some of those updates into some of these committees. I don't, it was always good to hear, you know, the different departments come in and kind of get a little closer to their metrics, their performance, what they needed from us, what we could provide to them, that kind of thing, so.
No, I agree that, I'd say, some of those updates have looked at being eliminated, and some of those updates are being folded into this right here. So, yeah, we don't want to lose focus on those other.
I like the concept of a committee of the whole structure. It allows for what I hope to be more or less formal, more informal discussion, which doesn't always happen in a formal board setting, and maybe, maybe it even allows us to kind of let our guard down and just ask questions without somebody, us worrying that somebody, I can't believe that board member didn't know this. Well, I don't teach here, I don't work here, I may not know that. But that leads me into, so I think it could be good for, for those purposes. What I worry a little bit about, and time will tell, and we can always adjust as time goes on, is I don't have the operational internal knowledge possibly to chair and steer the direction of what we should be talking about. I don't, I'm a community, I don't work here. But I also worry, and I think we can all keep ourselves in check and balances here, that, a big believer in balcony dance floor, and the more we get on the dance floor, that's your job, you know, and, and your team, and our teachers, and our, you know, all the professionals we have on staff. So I don't want, I want to be careful that we don't, that our priorities and what we're assisting with are absolutely what our professionals feel is a priority. I don't want us overstepping, so, you know, we're balcony. So I just worry a little bit about that. But I'm always up for trying something new. I didn't, I wasn't a fan of the existing structure, so I think, I think whatever we try is probably an improvement. And I also, the biggest thing I like is all of us talking about these topics, because when we were going and having the smaller, let's say, finance committee, well, that's one of the most important things that we all should probably provide input, not just a subset of. So if we have these committees, I really like the fact that all seven of us are sitting at the table to learn and ask questions. That's a big benefit to this, so. I guess time will tell, and I'm willing to try anything, so.
Yeah, time will tell, and I'm sure it'll be uncomfortable at times as we figure our way out, but I think in the long run, it'll be much better for everybody.
I like the transparency it drives, too, just because our participation in a lot of those other committees, and they would, I was on the insurance committee for two years, you know, and it's hard to relay from a set of notes or minutes, the discussion that we have. I like the idea of having these conversations in open meeting. I like that.
Well, the other was open, it's just more people attend this one, I think.
Right.
But I, yeah, you're, you're correct, though. It provides people, if they choose to listen or participate, how we derive at decisions, how decisions are made. So I, I agree with you. I think it's a benefit to it.
Facebook Lives, things like that, we might actually get more people attending on certain nights, you know, we're, talk about strategic planning, and there was a lot of these topics that came up during the referendum push. You know, how do they do this, how do they do that, when do they make decisions? This is a step towards that transparency that everybody asked for. I like it.
Can I jump in there, too? I appreciate that. And then, working with Board President Schultz, we also, community members, if they look at the board agenda now, we did, we've transferred most of our content to the public content area, so that it's a little bit more easier, it should be easier to understand what's being discussed, the pros and cons, and some of the proposals coming from administration to the board, just to help with that transparency. We did, we did hear about that, thank you.
When's your next Facebook Live?
I just did one today at three.
Oh, you did?
Did you watch? I'm going to try five o'clock. Maybe we'll get more people watching at five o'clock. But, yeah.
Any other thoughts or comments on the, the new structure? If not, there'll be more information to come, but I wanted to get it out in open and start talking about it.
The next meeting is the first meeting in September.
Yes.
Are we going to start then?
We're going to try.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I'm in.
I'll contact each of the chairs and talk, and just touch base on agenda items, so you can help me, help us, I can help you help us prepare for that.
Thank you, Danny. Next up, our committee reports.
I have something else for the President's Report.
Go ahead.
I'd like to welcome Steve Carlson to the board.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry.
And so, our new board member was sworn in tonight, Mr. Steve Carlson. Woo! We had to drag him out of Wisconsin, but we got him here.
Probably the first and last time anything nice is going to be said.
Well, welcome, Steve. We appreciate your commitment to the community. It's been long, and you've done a great job, and, and I personally appreciate it, and I know the board, whole board does as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yes.
Next, on to committee reports. We have a finance committee report.
I can go through it. The finance committee meeting met on August the 2nd. We went through and actually approved the committee meeting minutes of February 22nd, 2022, and then went into a preliminary FY23 budget, which I presented, and I will actually be going through the tentative budget tonight, at tonight's meeting, along with some ideas and kind of connotations, if you will, of revenues and expenses and broken down by funds. So we'll go into a much more in-depth of it later tonight. Any questions?
Superintendent's report.
All right. So just real, just a great update, I think, on the first couple of days of school, all our staff, we have a lot of staff that work over the summer, but all of our staff were back here last, I think it was Thursday. It's been a whirlwind since, but Thursday, right? Everybody's nodding, okay. We gave all of our employees a small notebook, and just talked to them a little bit about the need for all of us. You know, this, for a lot of people, feels like it's the first, it's the first normal first day of school we've had in a few years now, all right? So we tried to talk about the idea of reconnecting with why we got into education, but also recognize that, in a good way, the passing of the referendum signifies a new chapter for the Warren story. And the referendum isn't just about putting Band-Aids on something that was broken, it's about rethinking how we provide public education to all of our high school students here in the community. So we encourage them, everybody loves a blank notebook, right? You just, you've got probably 10 of them at home, but you still buy another one if you see it, because a blank notebook signifies the ability to write your future. It's something that you can fill up.
New beginning.
Yeah, new beginning. So we brought a copy for all the board members. It was great for me to be able to meet everybody. Everybody's been super welcoming. We had good turnout at the sneak peeks last week at the schools. Freshmen and junior orientation went marvelously yesterday. I've never been to one before, obviously, but I thought they were super fun and cool. Today was a ton of fun. I got to meet students as they came in at both campuses, and just kind of walked the hallways. Teachers were, teachers and staff were out in the hallways greeting kids and bringing them into their classrooms. Really, really good, I think, upbeat, optimistic, hopeful for the year. And in terms of hopeful, connected to hopeful, the state officially adopted the latest CDC guidelines, which specifically includes that quarantine is no longer recommended for people that come in contact with. So we really should be able to have as close to a normal year as we've had in a few years here. As far as my entry plan is concerned, I've started doing town halls, not only with administrators, but with staff. I did a town hall this week with the bus drivers, and then, let's see, we got the town halls planned for other groups, starting that first week of September and going through October 25th. These are opportunities for all of our teams to share with me what's going well, what they'd consider, ask us to consider to improve. Let's see, I've got job shadows scheduled with all of our employee groups. They start the last week of August, and I've already gotten invitations outside of those formal job shadow days to visit some classrooms. I think this Friday, I'm going to collect bugs out in the back. We'll see how that, what that ends up being. And as far as sharing, because when I came in, I said I'd work on three things, learning, listening, and sharing. As far as sharing is concerned, we did, we're able to transition the website over to a new theme, updated some of the ways that you find information on there. We're going to keep working on content. We started looking at some new designs for emails of your parents. Some of the emails you're starting to get are a little bit easier to read, hopefully, with a new format. And then, we're working on a family app that'll come out. And really, what the family app does is it just provides a little bit easier access for families if they need some of that quick information, but it'll also help us when we need to send out notifications to individuals, that they'll be able to get that a little bit quicker and easier than some traditional means. I also just want to take a moment and share with the public that we're very aware of the safety concerns that families have right now. In fact, I mentioned that, that was why we're about half an hour late, is because the board wanted to keep talking about our safety plans. We do review our safety plans regularly throughout the year. We do that with the Gurnee Police Department multiple times a year. We have drills multiple times a year that the Gurnee Police Department helps us with and gives us feedback with. And then, we go over that, that plan with our school board to make sure there's someone with an outside perspective looking at that. And we took a good chunk of time today, just to make sure that we're starting off the year in a good situation. So we don't make those available to the public, but we have a lot of processes to go through that. And we just want to recognize that we've had multiple gun violence incidents in the last six weeks that have hit close to home, should be, continue to be a point of conversation in our community. We want to make sure that we're talking about safety and its related topics here in the school district. So, those are kind of some general items. I also had a strategic planning on here, and so I got a couple of thoughts on strategic planning. And then, if you got any feedback you want to give me, that's great right now about strategic planning. So I think generally, as a district, when I've looked back, we have a pretty good history of keeping a strategic plan in front of us. Multiple times, from my perspective, you've gone through a long-term planning process, and you have a really good cadence of reporting back to the school board and talking about that. And the goal-setting structure seems to, in a good way, keep a strategic plan in front of you. I think you should be really proud of that as a community. But as I mentioned, with the passing of the referendum, I think it's a good opportunity to take this year and reimagine what we want school to look like here at Warren. This really is a once-in-a-lifetime like here at Warren. This is really is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, probably, for our students. So it's our seventh, this year's seventh grade students are gonna be the first ones that, that get the full four years of that. But because we don't get the monies right away, and because we want to be good stewards of that, I think it's a good idea. I'm recommending that we go ahead and move forward with refreshing our long-term strategic plan. So I, I, I generally think that it's probably a good idea to engage the community in that process. I'll probably recommend that we do that in the late winter, maybe early spring. And I'll probably recommend that the stakeholder, when we have the, that committee of the whole, and we break out into the stakeholder group, that that, in September and October, that be a primary discussion topic, so that you as a board can kind of craft how you want us to go about doing that. If we do that in September and October, you can give us some direction. We can then go, go forward and plan for that to get some feedback from the community and figure out how to involve the community. So I'll, I'll provide a list of considerations for the board, things that you can think about, and maybe discussion points for that committee. But generally, I'm interested now if, if, if anybody thinks that that's not a good idea, or if there's another approach, or just I'm interested in feedback from the board right now about that, that idea.
Good to me.
Bring in a facilitator for the process, or are you thinking of doing it yourself?
I, I definitely think that I could, we could do it as a team, I think, facilitate that. And I do have that as a list of things that you'd want to talk about, is do we want to bring, there's some pros and cons of bringing an external facilitator. They provide an external perspective, but I do provide an external perspective. It probably depends on how involved, or sorry, how elaborate of a planning process you're interested in. So if you, you know, I probably talk through that as a board first, how elaborate, or what, what do you want the process to look like, and then I can tell you if we can do that or not.
Ask John to help me remember. Did we have the outside facilitator come in two times, or one time?
Yes.
It was, and it was two consecutive years?
Well, yeah, I don't think it was two years. It was two plans, though. We did it, the guy.
Joe, Joe Porto?
Yeah, Better, yeah. And he used the, and he used the book Better to Best, or Good, Good to Better, Better to Best, or whatever it was. That was kind of the backdrop of the process.
A number of years ago, and the times of that, we did that actually.
That's probably correct.
We've definitely drifted around a little bit. We've, we've met on that plan without the facilitator.
Multiple times.
Three or four times.
I think we're at the end of it. This past year was really, if you look at it as a five-year thought process, a strategic plan, last year was the last year of the five years after we used the facilitator last. So we're, so this would be a year to redo it, and then think, you know, going forward. It just naturally fell into the right timeframe. Whether we use a facilitator or not is, I guess, up for discussion.
Yeah.
Fair with me.
For what it's worth, my experience with facilitators, as we ran the show, they didn't, and they didn't know what they were talking about, and I'd much rather hear from staff. Just my personal opinion.
Is there, so this year, we're not encompassed by a strategic plan, right? It, ours closed out at the end of last school year.
Well, it was kind of, it was a, it was a rolling plan, so it's not like it had an end date.
Okay. I, one thing I, that's just been running through my mind is, is I'm glad we, last year, didn't go through a process, because you get this lens of pandemic-related thinking. We weren't sure with the referendum, and you're setting up a five-year plan with current circumstances. So, part of my wondering is, do we hold for one year and let people re-acclimate to the job that they were trained to do, hired to do, and we want them to do? Kind of have a reset baseline, then people can focus on it. And maybe, maybe if we do this, maybe just wait till spring at least. I wouldn't touch it this fall. Like, you know, at the earliest, it would be spring, and maybe, I don't know, I just, I want to be conscious of people having a chance to breathe, and just work with kids, so that we've have, you know, with, with all the focus on social emotional learning and safety and all that, let our staff, let our admin just reconnect with kids and then maybe reset. So I don't know, I mean, I guess what I'm proposing is a slight delay, a slight pause, if we can. If that's, but, or, you know, if people feel strongly, we can always plow forward too, but.
I, I think what you were describing was not a.
Was a slight pause.
Not, not having the strategic planning session this fall. It would be in spring, but starts the discussion.
Well, it would start in spring. My guess, it wouldn't, you wouldn't finish, though, for the following year. I'm assuming it would, or would that be the goal?
I think that we could, if we wanted to have some type of direction for next school year. Right now, there are a handful of items that were on the last strategic plan that were kind of ongoing, and, and plans are already in place for that. I am not pushing a plan right now with the team, but we could definitely wait until spring to start any type of planning process. Yeah.
Something fresh, at least, looking forward into '23, '24, for sure, whether we did, you'd have to do it in the spring.
Start in February, when everybody wants to get out of the house.
It's helpful to me. So we'll, I'll talk to the stakeholder chairs about just facilitating that conversation somewhere, so you can talk more as a team about that. There's some notes in here about us being designated as a tier-one school that does allocate more funding to us this upcoming year, and I think is a validation of just a recognition by the state that we do have some funding concerns here in the district, or historically have. Then I've included a succession plan, which I'm required to do for your policy in case I get hit by a bus. And then, Dr. Engel has a treasures report.
Before that, would the tier-one categorization there be affected by the referendum?
No.
Still in bad shape?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It just helps.
Every little bit helps.
All right. So going into the treasures report here, so I'm gonna do a quick budget update. And if you guys remember, last board meeting, we didn't have the, the graphs or charts that were available through Forecast Five for the visuals, so I'm just going to go through that for the month of July, I believe. Yeah. So, excuse me, June. So we're gonna go through this. So, current fund balance breakdown, so this is as of June 31, 2022 is $38.1 million. Debt service there is subtracted out at $2.4 million, brings us down to $35.7. Subtract out the capital projects of $100,000, and that's out of the capital projects fund. We're at $35.6 million. And then, the working cash restricted portion of about $10 million brings us down to $25.6 million. Right now, this brings us to 35.5% of our annual fund balance. ISB still recommends 25, and this was after we had received some of the June tax money that had come in. We received two allocations in the month of June. So for comparison, 12 years ago, the district had a fund balance of just over $57 million. Capital projects for that time were $27.4, which brought down the remaining balance to $25.6. And at that time, it was 50.2% of our ratio. So going through the treasures report, like I said, cash on hand right now is $38.1 million. I wanted to see kind of how we ended out the year. So going through our projected year of end revenues, actual year-to-date, this is everything that came in, we're about $105.7. Local revenues were at 104, and state revenues, for the first time, actually cracked 100. So we actually got everything we're supposed to get from the state. That's been the first time, I believe, since I've been here, so this will be five years, the state's actually surpassed what they're supposed to be providing us with. On the expenditure side, if you look at expenditures, this is all expenditures, we ran a little bit over, we're at 101.83%. Year-to-date on the salaries, we were just under almost 99%. And year-to-date, actual, this is other objects, including special education, we ran a little over on, we're at about 13% over for the year. So as you can see here, this is our current year ending. We are there in the blue line, so you can see kind of our fund balance trending, and we ended the year just slightly above where we were last year. That first kind of rainbow color there on the left, that is our ed fund, and you can see that nice little pink color up above, that is the influx of our tax revenue coming in to bring us back into positive territory for the year. So these are month-ending balances. You'll notice that beginning of May, excuse me, end of May, we're at the three, excuse me, $6.3 million. We ended the year at 3.4 positive. So overall, as you could see, if you take all the funds across, we started out early June at $23.8 million, and we ended at 38. So we were looking at about a $15 million of influx that came in over expenditures. So here's the time, this is for the period ending, this is all the way through June, beginning of the year, we were just shy of $36 million, and we're ending the year just a little bit over $38.2 million.
Questions? No. Next up is the consent agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda? If not, I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes personal recommendations per Exhibit A, numbers 19 through 45 as posted, and athletics, activities, and volunteer personnel recommendations per Exhibit B, numbers 13B through 27B, as posted. The payment of the bills dated August 16, 2022, in the amount of $1,657,081.24. Regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of July 19, 2022. Regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of July 19, 2022. Is that correct, that they're both?
July 19th, one says August 2nd on mine.
I have July 19th on mine twice.
I have my.
I have July 19th twice.
And special meeting minutes and executive session minutes of August 2, 2022.
Sorry, mistake. So the recommended action should actually be the move to approve the regular, E should be August 2.
Yep.
So it was just redundant with the July 19th. So we're all good, then?
Mike says August 2.
Just need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Second was by Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we're on to action items. Dr. Wissman?
The first is submission from an employee for a leave of absence. That was discussed in closed session today.
If not, I'm, I'll read the recommendation as written. I move to approve the request for leave of absence for employee 2022-1.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Drake. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes. Oh, wait. No. No.
Mr. Demonte?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Carlson?
No.
Mrs. Blair?
No.
Mr. Drake?
No.
And Mr. Schultz?
No.
I have seven no's. Motion does not carry.
To approval of our 2021-22 Serious Safety Hazards Amendment?
Yeah, this is something that really the state designates certain routes as hazardous, so when those come, we give those to you, and the board approves it. I don't know what happens if you don't approve it. I think the state still says it's a hazardous route, but they're here for your discussion.
Okay. I think you're reading all of our minds. It's like, okay, they are what they are. So I think it's more that we're acknowledging that we're aware of them.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. I move to approve the 2021-22 Serious Hazard, Serious Safety Hazards Amendment, number two, as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
I have seven yes. Motion carries.
Up is an approval for the agreement with the Now Center Arena?
Yeah, so we've had a really good experience with this venue, and would like to secure the venue for the next two years. It, it's a great venue for our families. It's large enough. We have a lot of students that graduate, and their families are able to attend this. And so we're looking to renew that for two years, the next two years.
Just out of curiosity, how much bigger is that than anything we could do here?
Blinding somebody else to answer that.
Yeah.
You gotta let the families in.
Right.
Yeah, we used to do this at Northwestern. We had to limit families to four tickets. It was extremely difficult to get there and get out of there. This has been, this venue has been phenomenal. Unlimited, I'm not gonna say unlimited, but we don't restrict to four tickets anymore. Access is super easy. It's been a fantastic venue. And it was like one of three or two venues that could hold our school. That was a big learning when we, when we had to leave Northwestern. And I don't even know, is Northwestern back in the graduation ceremony business? They did that big renovation and.
It's done, but I don't know if they're.
Yeah, they've been done for a while, but I don't know anybody that's there. I mean, I haven't actively looked at that, but.
Seen some nods, so I think they are, but who knows what they're limiting it to.
In that case, sound like a motion to approve.
Read the whole motion first.
I'm sorry.
I move to approve the license agreement for Now Arena between the Village of Hoffman Estates and Warren Township High School District 121, for the Warren Township High School graduation ceremony for 2023 and 2024, and for the payment of $25,300 for the down payment for the May 21, 2023 graduation ceremony.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mr. Carlson?
Aye.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
And Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Next up is an approval of the Illinois State Board of Education Discipline Improvement Plan.
This is another state requirement. On an annual basis, we submit the overview of what we're doing to improve our discipline rates. It includes some practices around restorative justice, professional development for staff or classroom-level interventions, and just garnering student feedback through different surveys that we'll, we'll submit this to the state upon the board approval.
Any questions? If not, I move to approve the Illinois State Board of Education Discipline Improvement Plan for the 2022-23 school year.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Anderson. Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Next up is approval of the resolution of the '23 tentative budget.
Here's the calendar for the budget proceedings. Back on, as you can see there, August the 2nd, the finance committee meeting met. We went through the budget presentation in the 5036 state format. Tonight, at tonight's Board of Education meeting, we're gonna present the budget here tonight, and it's also in your, in your folder, I believe, in there for the 5036 state budget as well. Tomorrow, it's going to be published as an illegal notice in the newspaper, and also on display tomorrow morning. Then, on September the 27th, we're looking for a public hearing for the budget that evening, and board approval of. Some of the budget, oh, sorry. Some of the budget highlights include keeping our promises on the referendum, the fee reductions from $600 to $200. That's our student registration fees. Right now, that puts us at about a $1.2 million loss for the year as far as revenue. Parking going from $340 down to $200. Athletic fees from $275, which would have been $275, down to $200. Bridges, transportation routes, re-engaging those, retaining SEL, social workers, college career counselor, entry-level athletic. career counselor, entry-level athletics, about an additional $1.3 million. Also reinvesting in our facilities. We've done prior year allocations. We're at $250,000 this year. We're at $750,000 to help address deferred maintenance that we've been putting off. There's some increased costs. Supplies and materials are up across the board. I should also put in the purchase services as well. An example of this is just milk. Back in 2019 was an average of $3.04 a gallon. Right now, it's 3.55. So here's some revenue assumptions. Right now, all revenue is currently estimated in about $72.9 million. Local sources are 58.5. If you look at corporate personal property tax replacements, right now, we're estimated at about $1.9 million, down from the prior year, which was right around 2.3. Student fees are down approximately $1.2 million. This includes, like I mentioned before, registration, parking, sports, and activities. State sources are currently estimated $11.6 million. A lot of this is through our evidence-based funding formula for FY '23. It's about $8.3 million. FY '22 was about, it was exactly $8,77,008. Categorical payments from the state, we're assuming all four quarterly categorical payments are going to be coming in. Some will be a little bit smaller amounts. This year, we no longer have the National School Lunch reimbursement. That was our, the SSO that gave out free lunch and free breakfast for all students. So that is no longer coming in from the state. From the federal side, you'll notice that we're currently estimated at about $2.6 million. That's an increase due to IDEA, IDA, ARP, and ESER III funding. Also inclusive of that is Title I, Title II, Title III, IV, and IDEA grant.
Dr. Engel, can you just briefly explain what IDEA and ESER and title funds are?
No worries. IDEA grants are used for special education, kind of one-on-one aids, helping out with tuition. It's a, it's a federal grant that comes in there. ESER was part of the COVID relief packages that, for Economic School Recovery Act. There are actually three tiers. There was ESER I, ESER II, and ESER III. ESER II and ESER III were both approximately about $1.1, $1.2 million apiece that came in and funds. The difficult part about the ESER funds is you needed to spend them first and then get reimbursement back from them after you'd spent them. So it became a little bit of a cash flow issue for the district because you'd take about six months by the time you spent and actually received reimbursement back from the feds. But we were allocated additional money. So we use that money for socially, socially, emotional, social workers, et cetera, from there, and tier interventions as well. So I'll go to the next slide. So here's some revenue, excuse me, expenditure assumptions. Right now, we are just shy of $74 million in total expenditures. Salary is equated to $38.4 million, estimated about 4.5% increase. This is inclusive of all lane changes. Also included are the ESER II and ESER III funds that are remaining. That's still equates to about $1,085,000 in this year's budget. Benefits are just shy of $7 million, estimated increase 6%. Our healthcare costs, our PPO renewal for this year was 8.5%. HMO was at 12.7, and dental was at a 3.7% increase. Purchase services, just shy of $8 million, 7.8 and a half. Right now, we're estimating that to increase by about 5%. And just so, the purchase services are outside, outside people that we use that specialize in, could be multiple different fields. It could be our attorney's fees. It could be a plumber. It could be an electrician, just outside contracting, if you will. Supplies and materials are exactly that. There's supplies and materials. I'm sure everybody's noticed that things just cost more. Right now, we're using 5% as kind of a baseline, but I have a feeling it's going to be higher than that. Supplies and materials, we just went through that. Capital outlay, it's $1.8 million, and we are increasing that by 7.5% for this year. Other objects, including special education, right now, we're just shy of $15 million. And within special education, our tuition payments are up approximately 10%. Non-capital outlay, which includes technology and smaller stuff that's, that can't be capitalized, right now is pretty much unchanged at about $350,000 for the year. So if you look at everything across all funds, this is.
Too big.
Which part? Oh, no, no, no. I can go through the, the big part. If you look across all funds right now, our projected deficit is just shy of $1.1 million. And if you look operationally speaking, that will include the education fund, operations and maintenance, transportation, and working cash. We're just shy of $1.9 million for this year. So I like to show the, the annual, this is last year and this year's, this is the monthly CPI, the Consumer Price Index values for 2020 and 2021. As you could see, back in 2020, it was 1.4%. And through December of 2021, that's when we experienced that 7% inflationary rate, which we use that number for the December CPI. We use it for the levy coming up here. So for this next year, in December, when the district passes the levy, we're going to be looking at a 5% increase. So actual month, this is for this year's index values compared to last year for 2021. As you could see, 2021 is that bottom line there. It's at 7%. This year, if we hold flat, and this is as of June, we're at 9.1% inflationary and for the month ending in June. If we were, hold it flat and there's no additional inflation between now and December, we're at about 6.3% for the year ending. So this is the impact on inflation over the cost of items and pretty much the loss of buying power over the last 10 years. So at the top of the screen is basically, the baseline year starts at 2011 and goes through 2021. So what would it cost a dollar in 2021? And you had a dollar of spending power. Now that same thing costs a dollar 24, and your spending dollar goes down to, I can barely see it too, I'm sorry, goes down to 81 cents on the dollar now. So that, that, the two diverging lines are gapping, obviously, due to high inflationary costs. And this is what we're experiencing right now. So for the education fund, this is just a nice illustration. It breaks down where we get the different buckets, if you will. So taxes being the first kind of CPRT, that's the corporal, corporate personal property tax. Local funds, evidence-based funding formula, funds that come in, state fund and federal funding for a grand total there in the right column. So in green, you'll notice that that's the FY '22 actuals. They're unaudited. And then in red is what's budgeted here for the FY '23. So here, last year, we brought in approximately, this is for the whole entire fund there, about $55 million. This year, we're anticipating just shy of $52 million. And a lot of that has to do with, we're no longer getting additional revenue that came in for the National School Lunch program. That was part of it. The other part is to the local feed collection being down $1.2 million as well. So that's the difference in there. So next fund is buildings and grounds. If you look at the revenues, this one's pretty much remaining just about the same. You could see a little tax increase for this year. Local is going down because some of the corporate personal replacement property taxes are pretty much flat, but locals are going down. So this year, we're looking at about $8.6 million, excuse me, $6.8 million in total revenue. Next one is going to be debt service here. Not a lot happening. This is the, this is the district's mortgage payments. We know exactly what they're going to be and exactly what is going out. So we're looking at about $6.8 million coming in and exactly $6.8 million exiting. So the transportation fund coming up. As you can see, most of it's property tax dependent coming in. Last year, we collected just under 2.9. This year is going to be right up, just under $3 million. There's, there's going to be a larger increase this year from the state revenue sources because they use last year's transportation mileage claim reimbursement to fund the next year. And if, so the year ending that we just ended now was actually based off of the year prior, which we weren't running buses for a portion of the year. We're still running special education buses to and from, but not regular. So that's why you're going to see a larger increase in state reimbursement. So that brings up the total there, just shy of $4.9 million for the year. IRF and Social Security, again, this is just a, a direct derivative of payroll. So it's a direct levy and it makes up a proportionality of our salaries and benefits. So about $2,420,000 here for this year in revenue. So capital projects fund, this is money that's actually being generated. It's not what's being expended. So a lot of this is just earned interest coming from local accounts of $1,000 there for the year. Working cash revenues, tax money coming in, right, just shy of $53,000. Local is inclusive of all earned interest on those accounts of about $204,000. So grand total of revenue coming in, just shy of about $260,000. The one good thing about the inflationary costs that we are experiencing is that the 10-year treasury note has actually gone up and we're actually seeing some earning, some interest earnings, if you will. But they're not definitely keeping up with inflation, but it is something that's been helping out the district in the last couple of months. So TORT fund, again, this takes care of our collective liability insurance, also our workman's compensation, our board legal, and everything else that comes out of there. Right now, it's $822,000 in revenue, and it's going to pretty much match our expenditures coming out. So for all funds across all, all district funds, if you look at it that way, last year we had just about $75.2 million. This year, we're going to be right around $72.9 million across all funds. So this is it broken down. You can see the proportionality there is pretty much the same. Local property taxes are the biggest piece of the pie that come in. The next is CPRT, makes up about 3%. Local at about 7% of total funds. State funding just came in shy of 11%. And then federal, just right around 6% for the year. So going to the expenditure side, so this is for the ed fund. Salaries and benefits, we're at about $36.1 million. Benefits at about just 5.1. Purchase services for the ed fund, about 2.3 million. Supplies and materials, just shy of $2.1 million. Capital outlay for the year, 170, or excuse me, 721,000. Dues and fees, about $8.3 million. Non-capital outlay, about $350,000 for a grand total of just shy of $55 million. It would be $54,966. So here's a breakdown of kind of the expenditures out of the ed fund by category. As you can see, the big green kind of chunk there, that's salary. The next one to the left there, the red one is benefits. Purchase services are there in blue. Supplies and materials in yellow. Capital outlay is that light color, blue. And then dues and fees inclusion of special education is in that lighter green color. And the non-capital outlay is that tiny little sliver at the top that's less than 1%. So going forward in buildings and grounds, you'll notice salaries have dropped. We have less staff in, in buildings and grounds this year. Same thing with benefits. Benefits have also dropped. Purchase services are up to a little bit over $2 million. Supplies and materials at about just shy of 1.2 million. Capital outlay, as I mentioned before, this is the first time that we're actually funding it. Back to that $750,000 level, that was my first year here, that was at 750, and then it, it's dropped since. So I'm kind of happy and excited about that. So dues and fees, 2,600. Non-capital outlay, just a little bit over 2,100 bucks. So grand total for the buildings and ground expenditure, just over $4.7 million. Yes.
Quick question slash comment. So which committee of our three would cover?
Operations.
I want to see that on the September, I want to know how we're going to spend $750,000 and how that, how are we prioritizing that work? Because it's been a few years. We used to try to set aside 750 every year and target it towards this stuff.
Right.
At one point, I haven't seen it in a long time. We had a very, very detailed prioritized facility improvement plan that I think we've kind of gotten away from because we didn't have any money to spend.
Yep.
But.
No, I agree. Something long-term and short-term, what we need to work on.
Absolutely. How are we going to spend that 750?
Yeah.
Mr. Drake, that list is alive and thriving and growing. We, we will, we will go through that list, I promise.
Not today.
Not today, but we will definitely go through that list. I, I'm trying to remember, Dr. Wiesman, what were we up to? About $72 million in, in things. It was quite, it was quite a bit.
There's plenty to fix.
Yeah, so, all right. So the next is debt services. This is, like I said, just direct, this is our long-term debt there that we're paying off.
Could I ask what, I mean, other than Stern School, what's that for?
Part of it's for this building. We painted off. Oh, yeah.
Addition to plane.
Yep, additions.
Addition here.
Okay.
One of the things that we did not that long ago, a lot of this was backloaded debt. Most of the bills, the larger portions of them were backloaded and through the Board of Education, we actually refinanced a lot of it and leveled it off, therefore not backloading it and actually being much more even. And we actually saved the taxpayers about $100 a year.
So you guys refi'd this?
Correct. We actually refi'd it at much lower rates. This was about 2019. Transportation fund expenditures going through. As you can see, salary and benefits, about $1.8 million benefits at just shy of $370,000. Purchase services at about 2.6. The reason why purchase services are down a little bit, and we could thank the board for that, was the purchase of the vans. So we have the vans. We're going to try to outsource less this year. We have. We have five total. And, and the good thing is, here, here's kind of the blessing in disguise, if you will. This is the whole proof of concept. The IDEA ARP grant actually came, at one time, it was $188,000 that a lot of districts were desperately trying to fulfill transportation needs within Special Ed. And we actually wrote out the grant to include those five vans. So federal funds paid for those vans. And, and so it was, it worked out rather nice. So they, they have to stay in special education, though. We can't transport, like, they can't be used for athletics or activities or anything else like that, just FYI. So, so for the total there for transportation, just shy about $5.5 million for the year. IRF, Social Security, again, this is a direct proportionality to salaries and, that go through it. So we're looking at about $1.379 for the year. Capital projects, this is small things that are going to be happening, but right now we have $136,000 dedicated for capital projects outside of the $750,000 within buildings and grounds. So TORT expenditures right now, we're at $788,500 for the year. And then here's, there you go. Here's all funds across the board, so you can kind of see salary, benefits, purchase services, and everything going across. We're this year just shy of $73.9 or almost $74 million grand total of all funds and expenditures. So here's the breakdown. This is all funds. On the left-hand side, you can see the FY '22 actuals. And on the, on the right-hand side there, that's the FY '23 budgeted. Pretty much, they're the exact same proportions from one year to the next. There's not a lot of change. Salaries being the largest proportionate share of 52%. Benefits making up 9%. Purchase services at 11%. Supplies and materials at 5%. Capital outlay at 2. Dues and fees, including special education, at 20% of the non-capital outlay of less than 1% for the year.
How, how close? Go back one slide, please.
Sure.
How close were the 22 actuals to the 22 budgets for expenditures?
Really close.
99, 100%?
If I go back to the, to the Treasury report.
101.
About 101%, yeah.
101. That's what you said just a minute ago.
So we, we budgeted our expenditures within 1%. Not bad.
I always look at it this way. We have control over expenditures, but as far as revenue, there, I mean, we've experienced this just with delays coming in from the county, the state, and, I mean, as a district, we have much more control over expenses than what we do revenues throughout the year.
Yeah, and just so anybody doesn't remember, the referendum money doesn't start coming in until June of 2023. Right? So there's none of that money in next year's revenue or expenditures.
Even then, it's going to be a trickle.
Before you go on, and I know you've had a lot of time to consider this, but where do you, if anywhere, see an impact on any of this in reference to what the president signed today? Healthcare, energy, anything?
I don't see a lot happening in energy. I mean, right now, we, this campus here is about 97% off-site right now.
There were loads of things in that building. I just wondered if...
That's a good question.
That is a good question. I'd have to research it for the...
What you had all day.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We'll go through it, but as far as direct impact for us, I, I don't see it, honestly. There's not a lot of direct impact.
Thank you.
So, here's the budget recap here. Again, keeping the promises of the community on the referendum, reinvesting in our facilities and deferred maintenance. So, then overall, there's been a large shift in costs and supplies and materials and purchase services for the year. And I've kept this one in there. We only have one year until the referendum funds start flowing in, so we just have to make it through this year. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Engel. If there's no more questions, I move to approve the resolution for the preparation, preparation of the tentative budget for the fiscal year 2023.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Drake. Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Demonte.
Yes.
Mr. Drake.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is an approval for facility rates for the next school year.
So, after discussion last month by the board, we looked at and are proposing a no increase to the Class I. These are a lot of our feeder programs for facility use. Slight increase to Class II, which are nonprofits, religious, charitable organizations, civic organizations, but then double the Class III, which are more the private rentals for our facility uses. I think this moves us, just kind of helps us take a step. We haven't really increased fees in many years, so this at least takes us a step forward, and we can look at kind of a larger review next year if we need to. But this gets us in the right direction without impacting the student programs as much.
Questions? If not, I move to approve the facility use fee schedule as presented for the 2022-2023 school year.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. Mr. Drake.
Yes.
Mr. Demonte.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, Dr. Engel's gonna talk about the land farm lease agreement.
This evening, we have the approval for the lease of the 100 acres over at Stern School Road, approximately 66.4 acres as farmable land. And we are looking for an approval for the dollar amount that's in there. I don't have it here exactly in front of me, but...
$170 and 63 cents per acre.
Correct.
For 64.7 acres.
Questions? If not, I move to approve the land lease agreement with Peterson Grain Farms, beginning January 1, 2023, as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Anderson. Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Demonte.
Yes.
Mr. Drake.
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez.
Yes.
Mrs. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Last agenda item that we have for tonight, so I will move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second by Drake. Roll call.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Demonte.
Yes.
Mrs. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Drake.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can we get a picture of everybody? Maybe we want to do a board picture.
Oh, I gotta come here.
Thank you, everyone, for showing up tonight. Stay safe, stay healthy.
Thanks for coming.